Good evening, everybody. This is Harold Watson, zoning chair of the Stratford Zoning Commission that now sits for its regular live monthly meeting on Wednesday, September 27, 2023. The quorum for this meeting is four, and I will now call the following elected commissioners: Jim Vigliotti, who is absent tonight; Commissioner Dion Francis;
Here.
Myself, Harold Watson; Deborah Lamberty;
Here.
Len Petricelli, who is absent also. Sitting in for Len will be Rich Fardett, who is...
No, just Yannis.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, Lynn DeMannos is sitting in for Jim tonight, and Rich Fardett is sitting in for Jim Vigliotti. We also welcome our Planning and Zoning Administrator, Jay Havansky; Gail DiCilio, our heroic recording secretary; Patricia Sullivan, our zoning legal counsel; and tonight we have a petition from only one group, unless I'm wrong. We have a petition from Honey Spot, the Honey Spot Road item, the LLC seeking...I'm not going to go through the whole...the C3EGV1 LLC seeking special case approval to establish a retail cannabis business within incidental site work in a CAMA zone. That will be our...that's our only public hearing tonight, and hopefully we have someone here to speak on that. Public may speak only at the invitation of the chair during both administrative and public hearings. With that said, I call to order this monthly mission, the session of the Stratford Zoning Commission at 6:00. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. We will now move to open the petitioner's public hearing. Can you please, each of you, give your name, and if you're from Stratford, the street you're from, but otherwise, just give us the town you're from.
Can you guys hear me? Yes, this is on great. For the record, my name is Megan Miles. I am a land use attorney from the law firm of Carmody, Torrance, Sandac and Hennessy. My office is at 195 Church Street in New Haven, and my firm represents the applicant, which is C3EGV1 LLC. I do sympathize with the number of letters. Before I begin, a couple things for reference. First, I would like to submit the certificate of mailing of notice as required, and then I also have photos of the sign posting, when I posted the signs on September 14, 2023.
You can just pass it around now?
Yeah. And also, for the record, the sign is still on the property. We've been stopping by, it's been continuously on the site since posted as required. And then I also have...we do have everything on boards. I also have a hard copy, because COVID made everyone realize that often you can't see the boards. So I have hard copies, and then there's a couple site photos here as well, so I'm going to hand this out also, if you can just take it.
Is that different than something we might have already gotten, Jay, or is this...we don't know?
This is...the majority of that you already have. The new information is I have a property aerial to orient you to the location of the property and photos of existing conditions.
Okay.
And there are a couple pages that are corporate information on the applicant, for your reference as well. And I will go through that through my presentation. So with that, I'm actually going to begin my presentation. So as I mentioned, I'm hearing on behalf of the applicant. The applicant is a wholly owned subsidiary of C3 Industries, Inc. I have three people with me tonight from C3. Encore Runkta, who is the CEO; Bob Phillips, who is the Director of Design and Construction, and he's the main resource for the building updates and questions on that; and then Alexander Lucch, who is the Business Development Manager, and our local Connecticut guy. Our engineering team is SLR International. I have two folks here from SLR. Rock Emond is our civil engineer, and Neil Olinsky is our traffic engineer. So as mentioned, there is a pending application for special case approval for operation of an adult-use cannabis retail establishment with companion site plan review for some nice site updates. To briefly outline my presentation, I'm going to give a brief overview of the property, existing conditions, and introduce the applicant. I'm actually first going to have us review the site plan and the site improvements and focus on the site work, and then, once that's all set, we will review the company and the operations of this site as a cannabis retailer. So breaking it up into civil and use separately, and then we will round out with a quick presentation from our traffic engineers, and so he's available for your resource if you have any questions on traffic. So I will try to keep it brief, but I encourage you to interrupt us at any time with questions, please. So, to begin, I have...the first page of the packet is an aerial. I just took that from Google. The property is 130 Honey Spot Road. As you can tell, it is right next to I-95, near exit 31, and it's very close to Stratford Avenue. It is surrounded by a heavy mixture of uses. There directly adjacent is the Town Fair Tire site, proximate is industrial, I-95, some residential, some office, some automotive uses, so it really, really is an intensely diverse use area. It is a little under half an acre. And then the following next few pages are photos of existing conditions. So the site is currently improved with a two-story commercial building. It is a little under 5,500 gross square feet, I believe. It was constructed circa 1910, and you can tell that it's unfortunately in a state of significant disrepair. Other than the existing building, the site is also improved with the rear asphalt area. I don't believe it's striped. It's mostly overgrown at this point. The Google images indicate that it's been used for outdoor storage of construction equipment, but currently it's empty. There is no storage back there. The property itself is split zoned. The front portion of the property, fronting on Honey Spot Road, containing the building, is within the CA zone, and then the rear portion of the property is within the MA zone. So it's split zoned between commercial and light industrial use. And then the asphalt area, portions of that area, also fall within the FEMA flood hazard zone. So some of the parking areas within the flood zone, and then the entire building is outside the flood zone. To briefly introduce the applicant, as I mentioned, they are a subsidiary of C3 Industries. C3 was founded in 2018. It is a private multi-state cannabis company, currently with operations in Michigan, Massachusetts, Missouri, Oregon. They were recently approved for a new cultivation facility in East Hartford, so I believe that's where all the products would come from, is from their in-state cultivation facility. And they've also recently been approved for a retailer location in Canton, Connecticut.
May I ask you a question?
Of course.
Do they do retail in Boston?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And they...actually, I can stop there. I'm now going to hand it over to Rock to present the site plan and the site improvements.
Just for the record, Rock Emond, E-M-O-N-D, SLR International Corporation Associate Civil Engineer. We're out of Cheshire, Connecticut, here on behalf of C3 Industries, specifically here as it relates to 130 Honey Spot Road. Just put through. Bring up the site plan. Over. So before you, you see the site plan itself, as Megan, the attorney on the project, has iterated. The parcel itself is approximately just a little under half an acre, specifically 20,567 square feet total. There is the existing building that is located on the parcel just adjacent to Honey Spot Road. Just north of the existing building is the existing driveway. We're reutilizing the existing driveway in curb cut. The existing driveway is approximately 18 feet wide. Directly after we go into the site, we're starting to actually increase the size of that driveway. Approximately 60 feet in, we're going to increase it by four and a half feet, going to 22.6 feet, and then increasing, once again, to 24 feet to make sure that we make a, you know, good traffic pattern throughout. So once you get into...and I want to just be on this. So you're going through here. You're first faced with a rain garden, which is incorporated within the site plan. This specifically has a gravel leak-off that is specifically right here to allow for water to go directly into the rain garden itself. This is also, just for a portion, is curbed to essentially make sure that anyone that's going to be driving into the facility is maintaining traffic patterns and going through into the facility itself. Once you get into the facility, you're then bounded by the 25 parking spaces that are proposed. Specifically, there are nine by 20 spaces per the regulation, as well as there is a specific loading space in the center island. That specific loading space is primarily for off-peak loading and in-loading of materials. Circulation is, as you can kind of guess, you come in, you go through, you come around, and then you go out. There's 24 feet of drive-through, or I...drive aisle throughout. Specifically, there is five large trees that are going to be placed around the site, and the dumpster will be located as far away to the southwest corner of the parcel. We're also incorporating more LID practices within the site. Just wanted to touch on real quick. There's a reduction...I can't think of that number. Existing conditions today, there's an impervious area of 19,134 square feet. Under proposed conditions, we're looking at a reduction to 17,382 square feet. There's a reduction of 1752.
So can you point where that reduction would be?
So everything that's shown in green, so I guess one way I could put it...
So it's the borders that you're...
Correct. Yeah, we're essentially...so right now, it's almost completely paved, and...
And, yes.
Yeah, so right now, there's approximately...wow, I should have looked at this before. It's 93% paved today, and a reduction will bring it down to 76%.
So you'll meet our 20% if you're...
Oh, yeah.
Good.
Also with that, we're, once again, just bringing in some more LID practices. So what we're doing is we're allowing for water to go into a current drain and infiltration trench that's going to be bounding the entire site. This also interconnects the rain gardens.
Can I just interrupt you one more second?
Yep.
That's a new addition, and I appreciate that.
Yeah.
You're going from a half inch to one inch.
Yeah, we're doing the full inch.
Which we are really trying hard, because we have flooding problems. That brings me to my question.
Sure.
This is in a FEMA zone.
Correct.
Can you show me just with a finger where that...about where that zone...I know it's in the upper-left hand corner.
Actually, easier on the site plan, which shows the existing conditions plan. So specifically, there is a line that's on the existing conditions plan that says Zone A and Zone X. This is the line.
So everything to the left of there is...
Is in the flood zone.
Is flood zone.
Correct.
So the whole parking lot is in the flood zone.
Correct, which is why...so we're...once, you know, we're providing the one inch, you know, we're overcompensating with regard to that, as well as we're making sure that the reductions in this area were compensated for that.
It will benefit us as well as you.
Oh, yeah. And, and just to hit it home, we're also showing that there's a net cut in the amount of earthwork that's going to be produced. You know, so one of the reasons...one of the kind of nuances with the existing site, it's so flat that we actually had to perform some microtopography to cut...I can bring this back. Some microtopography specifically in this area to kind of push the water to where we want to get it into the infiltration trenches. So there is some microtopography that allows us to push all that water over.
And would you consider doing the parking spaces pervious?
Well, I would think that...so because we're having such a large decrease in the amount of impervious...
That you won't need that to get the one inch.
No, we're already compensating for the one inch throughout the entire parcel.
Okay.
Yeah. Do you got any more?
Yes, I do, actually. And I was looking carefully at this. The incident of people who are buying medical or retail of any kind of cannabis, a lot of them are...do have medical conditions.
Sure.
Would you consider putting two ADA spaces in there? I know the regulations probably say one, but I'm just thinking of a retail day. You could easily get in two people who van themselves in.
So one of the reasons why we're also showing the one specifically in this location is we're trying to maintain ADA access to here.
I understand. I just...there's a spot next to it where you could almost fit in a second one, just...
Yeah, so you would want to say, because technically, per code, you can share a stripe, so you can kick one over here.
Yeah.
Lose a space, and then...well, would you actually lose a space? You would be in a net zero. So I guess, would you be amenable to changing one standard space to an ADA space?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't see why not.
You're...
Honestly, as long as it...as long as it works from an ADA perspective, I have no issue.
Your customers will appreciate that, I'm sure.
Yeah. So I would appreciate that, too.
Okay, the only other...I'm going through...
Oh.
Go ahead, keep going.
Yeah, I'll just finish up, and then we can start going on. So we're proposing 25 spaces, there's one loading space, there's...obviously, you know, with all the improvements that we're going around, we're also increasing the amount of landscaping throughout the entire development. This was a plan that was put together by a CT professional landscape architect. You know, they're doing their fancy thing with regarding to what kind of plantings they're going to be specifying and all that. I am a civil engineer. I don't pick plantings. They look great. With regard to anything regarding zoning, I don't think there's anything I need to touch on beyond that. Rip that. Just looking at the amount of earthwork that we're doing, it's, you know, once again, it's a very flat site, so we're providing a sediment erosion control plan, which basically isolates the amount of sediment that's going to be leaving the site. There really shouldn't be much earthwork going on, but just as a balanced suspenders approach, we're providing steel fence throughout the entire perimeter of the project. It's really just the balanced suspenders, because there's, you know, one, the type of soil isn't really that suspect to the amount of erosion, and two, it's mostly earthwork with regard to cutting and excavating for new pavement or redo...or taking away pavement. So just really, just putting that together as just a balanced suspenders approach. Believe there was also a photometric that was included, which provides good coverage throughout the site. If you guys have any questions on that. That's basically it for the site plan, and I'll kick it back over to Megan.
I have one other question. You have a brick walk in front of the whole space?
Yeah.
Or two questions, actually, because I actually had a local voter ask me this question. Is there anything you can do to preserve the mural that's on the side of the building?
Sorry, could you repeat that?
Is there anything you can do to preserve the mural that's on the side of the building?
Oh.
Well, I don't want to...
I'm only talking about the one that's on the side, the one that has people in it, not the one that has the signage in it. Are there two? Is there one...there's one on...just on the...
On the highway side.
On the highway side. That's the one I'm talking about.
There's two murals on the building?
One on the highway side.
Oh.
You guys don't know it, but this was a very popular attraction for decades in Stratford.
We heard that there's actually a lot of sentimental value to this building.
So if you can do something like that, you will gain goodwill.
Yeah, and maintaining the Johnny's.
It's worth thinking about, but we're also trying to capture as much of our heritage, and a beer joint is not necessarily the thing we want to capture, but it is something that is loved by local populations.
I understand.
I heard about the Google River.
All right.
Well, that's where the...that's where the...that's where the rib recipe came from. Oh.
I...
Okay.
We did learn that this building has a lot of sentimental value to a number of members in town, and when we were at the ARB, actually, I think there was some happiness that everyone's preserving this building and actually bringing it back to life and not just knocking it down and constructing a new retail store. So I hope that the design encompasses what you guys are hoping to see to bring this building back. I'm not sure if they're adverse to...yeah, I don't...well, we just have to make sure that there is signage that indicates that this is actually C3 and not Johnny's Restaurant.
I understand.
We have to make sure that messaging is clear.
And I'm not going to do your marketing for you, but you could simply say, "Mural restored for Stratford citizens by," with your company name on it, and that might be a way to get around that.
Yeah. Hi, this is Encore Runkta from C3 Industries. I think we'd be happy to try to do that. We'll obviously work within your signage ordinance and make sure that it works from that standpoint, but we got that feedback as well, that people would like to see that stay, so I think we're totally fine with trying to do that.
I know it...we're discussing very big social issues here, but we're ending up talking about a sign, but it's important.
I think we were pleasantly surprised to see that people were interested in what we're doing in a positive way and wanting to see the, you know, kind of some of these elements of the original, you know, restaurant and all that come back to life, so I think we're totally fine with trying to do that.
While we're on the site plan, there was one other thing I wanted to discuss before turning to the use and the building design. Counsel for the abutting property, which is...you might just back him up. Oh, again, Megan Miles for the record. So this here is the Town Fair Tire site. I was called by counsel for this property owner here because they were concerned...right here, this is a queuing area for entry into the repair portion of Town Fair. So they were concerned that people might park here and walk across their queuing area to get to the site. So we had multiple phone calls, emails to confirm, and the applicant is completely amenable to, and my understanding is that the property owner, adjacent property owner, is fine with this as well, installing a black chain link fence here on this area of the property line. So black chain link...a high-quality black chain link fence can look nice, and there was a desire to maintain sightlines fully on this driveway.
Instead of shrub, instead of a hedge.
Or instead of a white vinyl fence or something like that.
How about a black picket fence?
There's a concern that would block sightlines also.
Okay.
Is...so the nice thing about a chain link is it's completely see-through for all intents and purposes, so you maintain sightlines on the driveway. So by code in Stratford, it cannot be higher than four feet within 25 feet of the property line, so the agreement...
The front.
Yes, sorry, the front, the street line, property line. So the agreement is that we would do four feet from the appropriate starting point for sightline purposes, likely about five feet back from the street property line, and then up until 25 feet back, do a four-foot black chain link fence, and then step up to six feet for the remainder of the distance. And then they requested that we also install fencing here that hooks into the building, so no one could walk back and around and that sort of thing. So there's a black chain link fence here. And then also, they requested wheel stops be added to this row of parking here to ensure that no one accidentally backs up and hits the building or something like that, so...
Question or comment, I guess?
Yeah.
We are in the process, Stratford is, along with the state DOT, of putting a traffic circle around about in at Stratford Avenue and...
Okay.
What is it, Jay? Stratford Avenue and whatever the...
Honeyspot.
Honey Spot Road.
Okay.
It's going to...it's the...there will be fan bikeways that go out from there, one of which will terminate right at the edge of your property.
Okay.
So I'm concerned that we're not creating a...once that bike lane gets in there, which it will go in there, because that's the gateway to our south end.
Okay.
And that's really going to be used a lot. It is used right now by bikers a lot.
Okay.
But it...we really will be directing traffic to there to get to other parts of the south end.
For Stratford.
So I just want to make sure that you guys are aware of it when you're doing your thinking, because critically, we're waiting on the DOT, but that will happen.
It sounds actually really exciting.
That is a funded...that's a funded project that is in design right now.
So my thinking for this was that, because we just finished discussing today, is that we handle it as a condition of approval, where these have to be added...these details have to be added to the plan in advance of building permit or something like that, and then if there's any required coordination with the building department or something to make sure that that's safely installed in a location, that can be handled at that time.
Jay, that we can accept this if we wanted to, right? With just the word that do this under approval?
Yeah, see, I mean, if the commission determined that they were going to vote favorably, you would add these as conditions of approval, you know, a fence, you know...
Wheel stops.
Wordsmith the fence, and then the wheel stops, and then a second ADA parking space. You just...you could add those in as conditions of approval as normal.
On the fence, how far is it from the beginning point to the building of Town Fair Tire?
It would go to the building.
I realize that, but I'm just thinking, going 25 feet almost sounds like the whole distance, so why would you...
That's what I was wondering, too.
Why would you really want to go up to six feet? Just keep it all uniform?
I had that same thought. We...so I...he's the expert, but I did a rough...I did a rough on Google measure distance, and it...Google told me it was a little under 50 feet, actually, that distance length.
50?
Yeah. He's going to spec it out right now.
I know, I know.
But it actually might be...
There is a 10-foot right-of-way in that area. That's the...that's the...so that might be where the difference is.
Okay.
Because the new sidewalks are going to go in there, which I assume will match up with your sidewalks that you have.
Okay.
I didn't think it was that far, but I would not be opposed...
I also didn't.
I would not be opposed to just leaving it at four feet the whole length.
Okay.
Make it look more uniform.
Yeah, I agree. I think it would make it feel less oyster.
You put a six-foot fence step there and...
Counsel for the abutting property owner is here, so he may be able to provide input during public comment. All right, we have no preference, whatever the town and commission prefers, so...
Okay.
Yeah, but...all right, so that's it for the site plan, unless you have further questions. I'm now going to turn to the proposed use, and with that, we can walk through the floor plan and the building design updates as well.
Harold.
So to...
Harold.
Oh.
One more question before. You had mentioned where the dumpster is going to...or you did not mention where the dumpster is going to be. You did mention a dumpster.
He showed it. It's down the bottom of the...
It's in the southwest corner.
Is that visible from the road around the...that cuts around the side?
That's the on-ramp to the highway.
Oh, it is, okay.
It's going to be fully enclosed? Yes. Okay.
This is densely landscaped, too, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, this is all...
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's dense. So to turn to the use, my understanding is that this is not Stratford's first application for a cannabis retailer. You guys have seen this before. To refresh your recollection on timing and dates, the state legalized recreational sales of adult-use cannabis in 2021. It took about a year for DCP to issue licenses, and the first retail sale started in the state around the end of 2022. So there's now been sales in Connecticut for almost a year at this point. And so there's facilities permitted and opened throughout the state. And it seems like it has played out where, when it first became legal in Connecticut and stores first opened, there was some curiosity rush, I think, but now, over the year, it really seems like the demand for these facilities has evened out to that of a traditional retail store. You don't hear on the news that there's a crazy rush when opening, that sort of thing. So that's been nice, how it's played out, and my sense is that when these stores now open, they're much more local stores and not a regional attraction for demand, that sort of thing. Just, again, even this...we're here for local zoning approval. If approved tonight, they still can't open. They then have to go back to DCP and get a state license from DCP. This is just one step in the process. Again, the use is for 21 and up, and that is insured throughout the site. You cannot get into the building without having your ID scanned, 21 and over, that sort of thing. Yeah, so with that, I am going to hand it over to Encore from C3 to introduce this company. Yeah.
May I ask you a question about that?
Of course.
Just reading through all of this, there are requirements with the state of Connecticut that you have all of your...all your ducks in a row within a certain period of time. What you're doing here is a major renovation.
Exactly.
It looks like on a building that's...could fall down, to be honest.
Yeah.
So are you going to be able to do that in that time? I think, Jay, is it...
Well, I will say also that my understanding is that DCP is in no rush to issue permits. My sense is that they take their own time and schedule in issuing them. Okay.
Again, this is Encore Runkta from C3 Industries. So there are some timelines that apply, so once we get the site plan approval and the special use approval, if we do, then we go back to the state and get what's called a provisional license. We were already awarded a license last year in the process that the state did, but we'll get a provisional license for this location. After that, you have 14 months to actually convert that into what's called a final license, which means to build out the space to get your local certificate of occupancy and become operational.
From the state.
Yes, that's from the state, correct, yeah.
One second. Sorry.
Yeah, so I do feel confident that we'll be able to get this completed in that 14-month timeframe. in that 14-month timeframe. We did have some conversations with Jay. In one of the proposed conditions, there was a six-month timeframe specified for us to complete the project. That is, that does feel a little tight for us, especially with a building that's in this condition. So that was something that we did want to bring up tonight, as, we were hoping to get 12 months to, to complete the project. We think that's a, you know, because we'll need to go through a formal design process if we were able to get this approval, then permitting, then construction. And then there's some, there's a state inspection process that you have to go through at the end as well, on top of the local inspection and occupancy process. So, so we are hoping to get a 12-month window, but we feel pretty confident. We've got, we've got a great team here. We also have an architectural firm and an MEP engineering firm lined up to work on the project. So, so if we're able to get the approval, we'll move forward on all those steps right away. So I did want to just quickly give some background on our company, if that's, if that's okay. And I'm happy to answer any questions first, please.
In that timeframe, can we count on you to keep the property up neat and clean?
Yeah, absolutely. We don't...
I think I, I think I met the, one of the gentlemen sitting in the back when he was there cleaning it up a couple of months ago, like, remove the graffiti.
Yeah, and, and we don't actually own the site yet. The way that the deal is set up is that if we get these approvals, then we'll close. And of course, we will fully maintain the site after that point.
Who does own it now?
I don't have the seller's name.
Jammers LLC.
Yeah, Road Jammers LLC. It's a, it's a different group, but, you know, that we put the property under contract with. So, so they're currently responsible for the site. We are, you know, we're trying to help where we can, but as soon as we take control of it, we'll, you know, we'll cut the grass, we'll plow, plow everything. Well, if there's issues with the building, we'll make sure it's fully secure until we start doing work in it.
Okay, till you take over ownership, can we make mention to the present owner that we're expecting them to abide by our maintenance, property maintenance?
Yeah, we can certainly mention it. Unfortunately, they are an unrelated third party, so we can't completely control what they do. But, but the goal would be to, we, we would look to take control of it very quickly after this process, so.
I'm just speaking from my day job.
I know the conditions.
As a light enforcement officer, and that place has been a mess for years. I've been chasing the old owner time and time again.
Yeah, and even the, the current owner has owned it for a very short period of time as well, so they haven't fully kind of taken control of it.
We just want to work with you, so.
Understood.
We want to know who we're working with.
Yeah. No, and our, as you can see from the plans, I mean, our intention is to really...
One more quick question.
Yeah, please.
Mrs. DeSille, I would like to know how to spell your last name.
Absolutely. It's R-U-N, as in Nancy GTA.
Thank you.
And the first name is A-N-K-U-R, in case you need that as well. So should I, would it be helpful for us to give a little bit of background? You have these pages in your package as well. So just a quick, quick bit of background on us. Megan mentioned this earlier. Our company's called C3 Industries. It was founded in 2018, so we've been in the cannabis space for about five years, which in this industry is a pretty long time. We are based in Ann Arbor, Michigan. That's where I live. That's where our corporate headquarters are. We're active today with operations in four states, Michigan, Massachusetts, Missouri, and Oregon. We operate 24 retail stores across those states. We also operate about 250,000 square feet of cultivation and processing facilities in those markets, and we have about 850 employees total. We're currently in the process of expanding into a number of new states, Connecticut being the first, as well as New Jersey and Illinois. So we are expanding our business as we speak. In Connecticut specifically, we applied in the licensing process last year. We were granted what's called a Section 149 cultivation license. That allows us to do cultivation and processing of cannabis. We are in the process right now of building out a facility in East Hartford for the production side of our business. That was approved over the summer for special land use for cultivation and processing. That'll be a 73,000-square-foot facility that we're building there. And then beyond that, we're allowed to also open two retail ventures as well as part of our license. And so this is the first one of those two that we're looking to cite here. Just to quickly mention my personal background, I'm one of the three co-founders of the company. My background's in the corporate finance world, so I went to undergrad in law school at the University of Michigan, which is in Ann Arbor, where our company's based. I then worked in New York as a corporate lawyer and investment banker for six years before I started this company. So, so my background is really kind of in the finance world, as well as in the real estate development world. Most of our stores and facilities that we currently operate, we took exactly through this kind of a process, meaning we, we won licenses, we selected real estate, we took it through a local entitlement process, and then ultimately built it out and operated it. So, so we're very familiar with this type of work. And I just mentioned that because there are other cannabis companies that have grown more through acquisition. We're more of a company that does the organic development ourselves, and that's really our, our bread and butter. So, so we're very comfortable with this type of a project. I will say that when we first saw this site, we were, we were excited, but we were also just a little nervous about what we were getting into. Since then, we've actually spent a huge amount of time in the building. Bob Phillips, our director of design, can speak to that. We're actually really excited. We think that aesthetically, the building is not great to look at today, but the bones are very solid. We feel very comfortable that we'll be able to sort of make the necessary renovations to bring it back to life and to hopefully, you know, make it a really attractive building to drive by and better than what it currently looks like. So I'll just mention quickly, I think I touched on, you know, this, this page which you have in your packet, this just provides some more detail on our portfolio. I won't go through all the details, but it just kind of breaks out how many stores we have in different states, what our production facilities look like. And again, I'm more than happy to answer any, any questions about our organization.
Quick question, please. With your production in Hartford and your retail, will 100% of your retail in, from, will it be coming from Hartford? Are you still going to be buying from everywhere?
We'll also buy from third parties, because we don't produce every type of product in our facility. We produce certain types of products. And so we will feature a lot of products from our facility. Maybe about a third of what we have in the retail store will be from our stores, and then two-thirds will be from other producers.
Because we just approved, I believe, a local manufacturer.
Yes, you did. And actually, we, we know that group, and so we do intend to work with, with groups like that. So, and I believe, I believe they're doing food and beverage, if I remember correctly, so.
I think, yeah.
Do you have the report as well?
I got a quick question also.
Yeah, please.
Just seeing that, you know, you have a lot of retail stores in, basically, you said, I think, 24, correct?
24, yeah.
And different locations of different states. For your company, since, you know, you are the CEO, what do you do for those communities around those areas? Do you have programs and what kind of...
So we, we do have a number of programs, so I'll touch on a few different aspects of what we do. So first, from an employment standpoint, we always look to hire locally, and in some cases, we make commitments to hire locally. So in a store like this, we would use kind of best efforts to hire from the Stratford community specifically. And we do offer, we, we make a living wage commitment as part of our business. So we, our starting wages are meant to capture living wage for whatever that, that area is. And there are certain calculations that we do to figure out, you know, where that living wage should start. We offer full benefits to all of our full-time employees, so that's health benefits, 401K, short-term and long-term disability. So we have a pretty robust benefits package. And then in terms of community support, we, we do do a lot of support for the, in the communities where we have our retail stores. And two of the things that we specifically do are involved with food banks is one area of, of focus, and then, and then sort of youth drug prevention is another area. And so what we'll typically do is find local non-profits that focus on those things and then contribute to them on an annual basis. And sometimes our employees will also get involved in volunteering at, at events if there, if there are local events held by those organizations. So, so that's kind of our typical practice. And, and, you know, if you go on our website, we've got a, a list of sort of the organizations that we work with in that capacity. And it's, I think, something that we've built a pretty solid reputation for. I think there was a question earlier about Boston. We do have three stores in the, in the city of Boston that, that we operate. We partner with different organizations in Boston. Specifically, we've worked with the Boys and Girls Club. We've worked with an organization called Work Inc. that's in Boston, that, that works with local communities and particularly people with disabilities. So, so that's, those are the types of, we're trying to work with organizations that work with people in our, in our communities. And so, so that's a pretty regular practice for us. So, so I know that, I know you've seen cannabis retail applications before, so I will, I will kind of go through things at a pretty high level, but if you'd like me to push, you know, to dig further into anything, please let me know. And so I guess just as a starting point, you're probably aware now, we are under a pretty heavy amount of regulation as an industry, and particularly at the state level. There are very specific guidelines as to how we operate our stores, what our procedures need to be, the security elements that are required as part of these businesses. And so I would say, as an industry, we're one of the most heavily regulated out there. And so it, it really creates some very specific parameters that we have to follow when we operate. And so if you look here at this, at what we're showing here, this is the interior layout that we're proposing for the building. We're showing the first, the ground floor on the right, and then the second floor on the left. We're intending for the main customer entrance for, for this store to be from the rear, from the parking area. And so that's what you're gonna, that's what you see here with this, with these new set of steps that we'll create, as well as a handicap lift that we're proposing back there. And so you would enter through this rear entrance into the lobby area. There will also be an entrance available from the front, although we think that'll be utilized less. Once you enter the lobby in our stores, you're immediately asked to check in with the receptionist, where you have to present your ID and be entered into the system. The access to these facilities is very tightly controlled under these state rules that I mentioned. All of the entrances and all of the doors throughout the facility will have key fob access, meaning that their, their employees are given key fobs. The, the doors have electronic strikes on them, and ultimately, all access to all doors is through those key fobs, other than that, the public access points that I mentioned. To then go from the lobby into the showroom, you need to go through a door that has a buzzer on it, and you need to be let through by the receptionist. And so we very tightly control access into that retail space. The retail space is where customers will actually do their transactions. In Connecticut, you can't actually have any live product in the retail space, meaning you can't have jars of cannabis products out there. You can only have empty display packages. And so people can look at those, they can work with the, our salesperson or budtender, we call them, in that room, and then ultimately place their order. And then the order's actually fulfilled in the back of house, in the fulfillment area, and it's passed through a window into the actual showroom where it's given to the customer. And so there's a lot of separation, you know, from, from the exterior to the lobby, to the showroom, to the back of the house where the product actually is. And so all of this is very tightly regimented. The products are all tracked from seed to sale under the state rules, and what that means is that they're tagged with compliance identification tags. They're, they're sort of tracked from when they're originally produced by the manufacturer to when they're shipped to the retailer. All of that stuff is tracked through the state tracking system, and that's all designed to prevent any diversion or any sort of improper use of the products. And so, so everything in here is very tightly, tightly sort of controlled. In terms of the back of the house, we do envision a vault in the rear of the, the ground floor. That's an area that we'll be making some significant improvements to. The state of Connecticut has some of the most intensive requirements around the vault and vault security of any of the states that we operate in. And so there's a very specific requirement around the exterior walls of the vault and how they're constructed. There's a lot of requirements around security equipment to monitor that space and to, you know, to alert if there's a problem. And so that's just something I want to point out to you. All the product does go in there at night, and so there's no product outside of that vault area at night. And so just another layer of protection, which makes it really, really challenging to try to break into one of these facilities. You would have to go through a number of doors and into a reinforced vault to actually reach anywhere that has any product or any, any money available. And then there are some back-of-house spaces. There is a ground floor break room for our employees. And then we also have a, a, a number of our back office functions on the second floor. And so we've provided a layout of the second floor here. It's primarily a work area, a secondary vault for additional product if we need it, as well as another break room and an office for our manager. And so the upstairs is just for employees. No customers will be up there. That's a restricted access area. And so we do intend to use the whole building. It's about 3,600 square feet of interior space that we'll be using, which is the perfect size for our type of use. We usually target about 3,000 square feet, so this is a little bit bigger, but, but that's great. I think it gives us, you know, plenty of room. We do sometimes see people trying to put these uses into buildings that are too small, and that can, that can be a problem if you're having spillover outside or not enough space to, to service your customers. I think we feel really confident that there's a pretty large lobby here, a pretty large showroom. We should be really able to, to satisfy our, our customers there.
Could I ask a question about your customers?
Please.
With this kind of a setup, are, will you also be having, like, pre-ordering online, any of that kind of thing?
Yes.
Because what we've had in, in previous instances of applications, the community's very concerned about the process of people getting into the retail and out, and how the impact that has on the neighborhood. So the more that you can tell us of how you will handle that, the better off.
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, so we do offer e-comm, e-commerce, so we have a website where customers can place their order. On average, across our 24 stores, about 50% of our customers use that feature.
Really?
So it's pretty high. Yeah, it's, it's a, it's, and that's, that number's actually increasing. We're seeing it over time. I think more and more people are making use of that, just like you see kind of in all kinds of retail everywhere. So, yeah, so just, and, and actually, to be honest with you, we expect it to be even higher than 50% in Connecticut. And the reason for that is that because you can't show the product, there are other states where they actually allow you to show the product in the showroom. So there's more of that sort of experience that people want, where they may want to come and look at something, smell it, you know, whatever. They want to have their experience of looking at it. You can't do that in Connecticut, and so it actually sort of takes away the incentive to come in and shop, because if you can't see anything when you're there, then what's the point in some ways? And so, so we would actually think that it could be even higher than 50% here. And so those online customers, they're coming in and out very quickly, because what we do is when they come into the lobby and they check in with the receptionist, they're asked, "Did you place an online order?" If the answer is yes, we have a dedicated checkout station in the showroom for those folks. And the idea is that they're looking for fast convenience. They don't want to wait, you know, behind the people that are there to shop in person, and so we're trying to keep them moving.
Another question. Is this both medical and recreational?
What we're proposing is just recreational here.
Okay.
Yeah, so that would reduce the demand a bit, so, yeah.
What are you going to do to discourage people from purchasing and then going out into the parking lot and smoking?
Yeah. Consumption on these sites is a major no-no under the state licensing rules. If we violated that, we would likely have our license revoked if we didn't fix the issue. We, we very closely monitor the site around, you know, around the building. I'll just go to the next page here. So as you can see, all of these icons are cameras that we're proposing, and so the building is fully camered on the exterior. And, and our managers actually watch those pretty closely to make sure they understand what's going on in the building and what's going on outside. We absolutely do not allow anyone to loiter on our property and use cannabis on our property. That would be, you know, very risky for us as a business. And, and so we really closely monitor the site. We're always sort of paying attention to what's going on out there. If it's a really heavy period, if it's a kind of peak period, we'll actually have somebody outside that entire window.
Kind of like, kind of like what I was looking for, some type of security outside to just move people along.
Crowd control management, yeah. We wouldn't necessarily have a full-time security guard here. We don't think that it's necessary. Again, that's something we're happy to talk about with you, if you, if you think that it is necessary. But, but certainly in those peak hours, just trying to make sure that, because we also want to make sure that people are, are parking properly, you know, that there's, that they're sort of, you know, that the traffic flow in the parking lot is, is moving correctly. But part of that is also, you know, there's a reason we don't propose any seating areas outside. We're not looking for people to stay on the property once they're done. We want them to, to move on, so.
You are aware that that has been known to be a rough neighborhood?
Yeah. Yeah. And, and, and if, if it is, if we, you know, move this forward and it feels like a security guard is necessary, then we're absolutely fine. And then we would get a third-party licensed and bonded security company to, to provide that for us. And, and we would typically do unarmed in that situation. We, we don't ever do armed. But, but I think on this location, we're still trying to feel out what, what's necessary there and what, what makes sense. Just since I popped to this page, I, I, again, I think you've probably heard this before, but we do have very significant security requirements by the state that we have to follow. I mentioned it on the previous page. We have to have cameras throughout the interior and exterior of the building. Basically, every piece of it has to be under camera. We do use the electronic key fob system on all doors, so we have a record of who's entering, who's exiting.
That's something that we locally in, in other projects that have come before us have asked for, that you create a plan for exactly this issue
Okay.
in writing, and then show results year by year or quarter by quarter.
Yep.
I think that's something that's actually very similar to what you have to do in terms of reporting for the state.
Sure.
Do you do that in other locales? You mentioned that Connecticut might be harder than some other states, but...
Yeah, I think it varies, but the idea of checking in with, with staff, you know, on an ongoing basis, or whoever the right party are, is, is a totally normal conversation. And I think we're, we'd be happy to do regular check-ins, or, you know, if we need to have a formal plan on, on record of what we would do to manage the outside area or, or other things, that I think we're totally comfortable with that.
We will ask for that.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
I'm sure.
And we saw, I think the proposed conditions contemplate us doing regular meetings after, you know, after we start operating, and that's, that's totally fine. So, so I, I'll just mention a couple other things. Again, you may be aware of this. All of the products that come to... of this, all of the products that come to our, our store, again, must be prepackaged under Connecticut law. Uh, and so again, this goes to, there's no live product in the showroom, uh, there's no open containers of products anywhere in the facility, it's not allowed. You, you get, it, it arrives to our store, prepackaged and sealed, it gets sold to the customer that way. And so that does have an impact on things like odor. Um, we think there, there's very limited odor that's generated from this type of a retail business and again, with everything being in sealed packaging, that, that just further mitigates odor concerns. With that said, we will install a new set of HVAC units in this building and we'll, we'll install carbon filters, um, in that mechanical system to scrub any air that's, that's exhausted.
As an expert, maybe you can comment on this, we've had both, um, growing and retail. The growing I know is a, is a whole different problem because you have live plants that you-
Absolutely.
-definitely are getting smells from.
Yep.
How much less would a retail facility, I read that you, everything is sealed in containers-
I honestly, I, I don't think there's any odor.
Okay.
And if they're, if they allowed open products in here, like some states do, then there's a little bit of odor that comes from that. In a fully sealed product environment, I would argue there's practically no odor, but we will still do the, do the mitigation, just to be-
And one of the ones we just looked at, they mentioned two different kinds of, of air scrubbing. Um, one was a closed system and the other was a HEPA whatever.
Yeah, you hear people talk about ionization as well.
Yes, yes.
Um, I'll say candidly, and it's a whole separate conversation, this is a very poorly understood area still, this idea of odor.
I, I understand it. There's no background information anywhere.
Yeah, and, you know, what are you solving for in terms of, you know, concentrations of particles and all that, it's, it's very challenging. The nice thing with retail is you sort of can sidestep some of that conversation because it's really less of a concern, I think, with these businesses. I'll, I'll tell you, in East Hartford where we just got our production facility approved, it was the number one topic of discussion and, and-
Maybe that's where I was reading up on this.
Yeah, yeah, because there's residential to our north there and so there was some concern with prevailing winds and our facility that, you know, and so we, we are, there we are implementing a very, very elaborate odor mitigation system that is another level up from what we do.
And there is residential near you in this area.
Yeah, yeah, but again, I-
So it's something to be concerned about.
Absolutely, absolutely, but, but I, just if you think about cannabis products, if they're sealed, it's, it's very, you know, there will be very limited odor, I think, but, but we would still, I, I believe there's a proposed condition that we would submit our, uh, mechanical plans, uh, locally just to make sure that everyone is comfortable that we're, we're going to mitigate the odor appropriately.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I think that, that's everything I had, so I'm more than happy to answer questions, you know, about our company or, or anything else.
Dion?
Well, the only thing I was looking at was your lighting.
I see, I mean, I see their LED, um, I don't know how many lumens they are, but I see you only have four.
I might ask her.
And then, I mean, you have four small ones on the building and you have three for the parking lot, but that's a pretty big parking lot. Do you think, I mean, is that kind of properly like that parking lot? Even though they're LED, I don't know how many lumens they are though.
Um, Bob Phillips, um, with C-Three Industries, Director of Design. I don't have those particular specs, but we, there is a photometric plan to stu-, to study that impact, um, is-
Yeah, see, I seen that.
Uh, yeah, we have it in the packet, there is a-
There's a photo.
Well, I have that, I have that in my packet.
Okay.
Um, I just want to see how many lumens are, cause I see there are some spots that are, uh, quite, you know, because they are, it's a part, having a, we, that's in the parking lot.
Yeah, they should be meeting any minimum site requirements per building code.
And specifically, one of the ideals is not to create any dead spots because of the security issues that could potentially have spot, on-site, so there is maximum coverage with regard to the parking area as well as around the building.
And we'll be monitoring by camera, and the cameras will need that light, um, as well to-
Oh, so you have to have enough light for the cameras to be functioning?
And it's just, it's, it's a safer environment for our employees moving in and out of the space as well.
Pretty much. Does that answer your question?
I mean, I just want to, um, some information on the LED, uh, the LED.
Oh, yep. Oh, yes, yeah, and they're also more energy efficient, you know, it goes down that whole rabbit hole of-
And also, you know, they go by lumens, cause, you know, certain lumens make it brighter and sort of, so I just wanted to give you the, the, uh-
I believe that they were actually, we included the, the cut sheet packages.
Yes, I looked them briefly.
Yeah, and in the, and specifically they had the cut sheets for both the, uh, the sightlight as well as the building wall packs. And if I recall, I believe they were four thousand Kelvin, which is that, uh, the wider light, as opposed to you're going up to a, a yellower light, so specifically that's more, you know, user-friendly with regard to, hey, we're, we're really trying to focus in on making sure that we can see everything within the parking lot. So I believe I'm right with the-
Yeah, I, I don't, I can't speak to it, but-
What's it on there?
It should be on the cut sheet.
Uh, yeah, it's blue and white.
Yeah, and that plan is computer-generated based on the specs and the fixture, the height of the fixture, distance, so that can, the computer program, that's what's generating that.
Yep.
Can I see whether it's given the max lighting in certain areas?
Correct. Yeah, so, and obviously when, you know, you have a central location for a light, it's an exposure rate, so as it's, you know, closer to the light focus, it, you know, creates a cone essentially of where you're going to be, uh, occupying with the, uh, the amount of foot candles. So the further away from the light, the lower it goes, essentially.
Okay, so what's the height of it?
It typically, oh wait. Okay, did we list it?
I do not see that on-
Typically it's between twenty and twenty-five feet.
Oh, so probably how many feet, like twenty-five feet?
Yep.
Twenty-five feet?
Yep, it's in the top or the, the bottom right corner of the lighting box. So that would, where the actual fixture would be?
Yep.
Yeah, no problems.
Commissioner Francis, in addition to kind of some of your questions, I just wanted to add that, you know, and more for the applicant's benefit than, than anybody's is that, uh, the zoning office has quite a robust enforcement mechanism for nuisance lighting. And so that's certainly something that needs to be paid, paid close attention to. You, you know, maybe you decide that based off of site conditions or conversations with your, with your neighbors that, uh, maybe twenty or twenty-five feet is throwing light or it's going to be too much of a nuisance and that you may find that you're going to have adequate lighting for this, so that your security system works well, but also, uh, you know, you're not throwing nuisance light all over that, you know, what we don't, what we want to avoid is you putting in expensive lighting and my staff having to come by six months down the road and tell you to change them all out.
Yeah, typically-
So, so something certainly to pay close attention to. Enough light so that security works and the site is safe, but also that you're being respectful of neighbors.
We're not really, yeah.
Cause that's been a big issue very, very recently in town, so-
Okay.
Something to pay attention to.
Yeah, duly noted, it's a, it's a typical conversation we're part of with that, that, and that, that plan should reflect limited or no lightly beyond the property lines too, so.
Yeah, I understand they are in the back, but, you know, when you need, in certain lumens and certain heights, I mean, you do have a, like, a question.
All right, thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Yes, Rich, go ahead.
As Jay stole my thunder. Um, just to reword it and piggyback off what Dion was saying, that if one of the zoning enforcement officer goes by and sees that there is not enough light or the police department requires more light, you would not be opposed to putting additional lighting in.
Absolutely not.
Especially in the back, cause that's-
Yeah, we use the, the photometric plan as a, as a design tool, so that we're hopefully not having that conversation later.
Okay. And, and we would actually look to try to get feedback from the police department before we build anything, so we can, we can do that, this, that, that step.
Just quick, now, are they adjustable or, or are they just, I don't know, are they looking wrong?
Are they pointing like, you know, down or they, are they projecting kind of towards the parking lot or just-
So, there's, there's a little swivel that's on the actual mounting mechanism that allows you to change the angle. You can't go up or down, but you can change how far you go and right now, everything is dedicated to ninety degrees. So, straight down is the perfect, uh, amount of light that you get for what you're trying to do for coverage.
But you could adjust them like per se for the other instance where, you know, the lighting's going to be a nuisance somewhere other, you know, off your property.
Yeah.
Right, so you can adjust it down instead of going, okay.
As well as, you know, uh, they do make modular shields that could be attached to the actual light itself in, in the case that, let's say that they're, you know, obviously with the state of Connecticut just to the south of us, they're not going to complain. Uh, but let's say that they, you know, hey, your, your light's coming over here. Uh, a shield could be adjusted and put on to the actual fixture and then, you know, you're not showing any light behind you or you're at least dissipating the amount of light behind you.
Okay. Just to re, just to add, the real concern here is the two solid blocks of residential across the street. So if you directionally keep your light from spilling out that way, I, you're not going to get the level of complaints if the light goes into their areas.
In this sighting, we have the building, shielding, it's the parking lot.
We're also rewriting our zoning right now and lighting is one of our things that we're looking at very closely, so anything that you do in terms of research of what's new and, and very effective and adjustable, I think will be valuable for us.
So for the remainder of the presentation, I'm going to have Bob give a quick overview of the building elevations so that you can see just the updates there. This already went through full ARB review, but just to give you some references as well and then we'll do a brief presentation on the traffic report.
So, the exterior facade and the form is, is pretty much intended to keep the building as it is today. There, there is some modifications on the backside to re-engineer the entry, to redo the vaults, to, to get the level of security we need, but the, the trim, um, the existing detailing will be mostly recreated in a very similar detailing that, as to what it is today or what it has been. A lot of it's, has fallen off, um, at this point. So in that, it consists of kind of the, the wood trim, wood columns, um, and then wood trims on the, the, the upper fascia. The, the primary building structure on the main level is, is the CMU that you see that's, it's white now, um, and it's where, this is where the Johnny's sign is. Um, so there, there will be, that, in speaking to that, if we keep that graphic, we're probably going to be recreating it because the wall and the materials will need some repair behind it, so, so maintaining it exactly the way it is today might not be-
It's a digital world.
So, yeah, and then, so, yeah, we would capture, capture the image and, and probably recreate it, um, in that, so, so I think that, you know, so in the building system, the cement base reunit or block, um, lap siding on the upper areas, um, wood windows, um, and the windows will be, um, kind of replaced in time. We're, based on the ARB, we are going to look at some things as to redoing some of the fenestration and, and the detailing around the windows.
And from reading, reading from what the ARB said, I think there's only one thing that they had, they, they actually liked what you'd presented to them overall from what I saw. Uh, but they mentioned something about the fascia board on the front of, that they felt that could be modified in some way, that it wasn't original to the building.
Yeah, there's, there's two things they touched on, kind of the, the column and beam system accentuating the structure was, was one of the pieces we talked about and then bringing some more life to the, the trim work, the dental trim work up at, at the top of the parapet. Those are, those are, they're what they were focused on and, you know, we pretty much concur with their suggestions. Everything was positive and, and would take it in the right direction, so we're, we have no opposition to their recommendations. Um, so I think in that, that, in, in the back, that we chose to go with an ADA lift versus a ramp that the, the primary floor level is about four feet off of grade, at calculating that's almost fifty feet of ramp to-
And that's self-operated?
Uh, yes, yes.
So most person in a wheelchair is going to know how to operate it?
Yes, it, and it'll be a UL-listed product developed for, for that exact use, so. It, it just kept the site constraints, it was, we looked at a, a ramp and the ramp was taking up a good portion of the parking lot, so. So I think in that, um, any, any questions as to where we're going?
Ladies, gentlemen, anybody?
Just quickly, is there any others, I don't really, is, is there any other signage besides the one on, on the top part of the building? Is there any-
We are just showing real limited signage, uh, based on what we know the ordinance to be today, um, just to call attention where the sign would be.
Okay, so that's the only signage, pretty much, okay.
Yeah, I, I can address that. I think there's a, a, a pretty restrictive, uh, signage, uh, uh, ordinance for cannabis here. I, I believe it allows for two feet by three feet, so that's what we're, what we're showing here.
That's about right.
We, we may come back and seek relief on that in the future, uh, but, but we understand that that's those-
We'll come back in a year when we redo our zoning and it might change, so.
Yeah, I mean, we, we do think that like any retail business, we'd like a little bit more signage eventually, just to, so for people to know what we do and, and that we're there, but, but we understand what the requirements are and we'll, we'll, we'll stay within them for signage.
Yes, Rich.
Question for, question for Jay. Uh, the mural on the side by I-95 entrance ramp, would that be considered signage?
There's an existing mural?
Yes.
That's visible from I-95? It's funny, I've never seen it.
Well, it's because there's so many damn trees there that need to be cut down.
Uh, okay, well, that would explain why.
Which these people are nicely going to take care of.
There, there's definitely one on the drive.
Yeah, but I think there's another one, that's the one that, yeah.
So, so it really depends on the content, you know, and this can get a little murky. Uh, you know, what's art, what's a mural, what's a sign? Um, and, you know, it's kind of one of those things, you know a sign when you see it and you know art when you see it, so I, I, it's, you know, I think that, um, without having physically seen the sign that you're talking about, I can't, I can't really say. Um, but, you know, I would say that, uh-
Our POCD would be in favor of a mural.
Well, murals are, and we, we certainly, we have had, uh, businesses in town, uh, they have, um, agreed to put up murals that, obviously they are not signage, so I think it really is going to be site-specific and depend on the content of what's being proposed. I just leave it at that.
I'll, I'll get you a picture in the morning.
Perfect.
Anybody else? Did you find something on Google?
We found it, yeah. It's on the south side where the-
So would you be embarrassed to have that on the side of your building?
No, absolutely not. I, I think, I think we could work with Jay to try to make sure it fits with the ordinance.
Kind of got like a little plant in there.
The only thing that, like Bob was saying, it's, it's in an area where we may need to repair that surface and recreate it.
I, I understand, I, listen, I'm-
Yeah, yeah.
I've done murals, so I-
Yeah, it looks like it's a deconstruction of the masonry wall, so you can, so you're looking through a hole in the wall.
Yeah, that's almost what I was saying, yeah.
Which would lend itself to a-
Yeah, it's, it's, it's cool, yeah.
A digital print that you could-
Yeah.
Do on vinyl even.
Yeah, and I don't know if those trees are on our property or on the state property, we'd have to figure out, but we can try to-
Speak to our-
We can hopefully find that out.
Yeah, yeah, and we're intending to clean up all of the landscaping, so that, that would just be part of that, so, great.
Anybody else? Jay, did you want to make a comment, question? Any members? No?
We just had the traffic piece left that we wanted to cover.
Ah-ha, well, we're, we're trying to move. Sorry.
Ah, yes, yes. Thank you, thank you. Good evening. For the record, Neil Olinsky with SLR. We have offices in Tresher, as you've heard, as well as New Haven and Glastonbury. And I helped with the traffic study for this, so I'm going to be brief, quick, because it's really a good story to tell. We did a traffic study, and naturally, one of the first things everybody wants to know is how much new traffic is a development going to generate, any developments? What we did is like we do on just about all of our traffic studies. We looked at a book called The Trip Generation Manual that's published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and it's a compilation of statistics essentially that, that has a compilation of traffic counts from different land uses. So you could look at how much traffic different types of developments and land uses and businesses might be expected to generate. They crunch it into statistics. So they have a, they actually have a land use category for this type of project. We looked at that. For a development of that type and size, what you'd estimate, what we'd estimate, is during a weekday peak hour, on the order of around 22 entering vehicles and 22 exiting vehicles during the busiest hour, peak hour on a weekday. And on a Saturday, peak hour, we're looking about, looking at about 26 entering vehicles and 26 exiting vehicles. These are estimates, so these are approximate numbers. So in the grand scheme of things, not a whole lot of traffic. What we did when we do our traffic studies is we want to know, how's it going to potentially affect traffic flow? How is new traffic added to the roadway system potentially going to affect traffic flow? So we, we looked at essentially four, these are two, well, three to four, in addition to the driveway, three to four off-site intersections up at 130 and Honey Spot and South Ave, at the on-ramp and Spada Boulevard, down here at the, the on-ramp, and also at the off-ramp at Mount Carmel and Anderson, which is part of that traffic circle. In addition to the driveway, which is existing and going to be retained. And we counted those intersections in June, and we analyzed them as part of a traffic model without and with the new projected traffic in the mix, so sort of before and after. What we found is no expected changes to traffic levels of service. That's one of the measures we, we look at, probably the, the main measure in terms of traffic flow. Level of service is essentially a measure of traffic delay and traffic flow. It generally ranges on a scale of A to F, with A being conditions with no congestion and F being the other end of the spectrum with traffic delays and congestion. And what we're finding, I believe, is with or without this development, overall levels of service C at these study intersections. That's without this development and with this development, so no traffic impacts expected. So it's a good story to tell. In no, in addition to that, we looked at driveway sightlines. Those all check out based on state criteria. And that's pretty much it in a nutshell. I don't want to take everybody's time, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, Rich?
Have you taken a look at the cars exiting off of Spada Boulevard onto Honey Spot Road?
And for the most part, there's at least two accidents a week there. We understand, there has, we do, I didn't go through it, but we do look at crash history, and there's a great resource these days called the Connecticut Crash Data Repository, which has really all the state crash reports. And we looked at that intersection. It does have a high crash history. It's a, it's a, it sort of is what it is, but there's a good story there encouraging because it's part of, if I'm not mistaken, that new state project, which was just announced, the new Conda project. I think it's, again, I haven't seen the design plans because it's very brand-new. I don't even know if the state has come up with design plans. They want to put a roundabout up here, from what I understand. And their study area for that project also includes, I think it goes all the way into both ramps.
It does.
So they're going to look at that. And I can't speak for DOT.
They did, and that's one of the reasons they want the roundabout, to impact the traffic further down on these extensions where people don't slow down, people.
Right, right. So they're going to look at that. Safety is a huge focus these days in the traffic engineering world, and Conda is on board with that. I can't say what they're going to do, but they're almost certainly going to look at it and see what they can do to improve safety there.
Okay, because I, when I was there, I happened to mention to the fellow that was cleaning up that day and suggesting some type of a barrier, because I would hate to see you go through all the expense of redoing that whole building, because that's exactly where the cars end up, on the, on the front porch of that, that building. So it, even if there's like a Jersey barrier or a concrete something there to deflect.
I don't think we have any plans for anything in front of the building.
We're thinking about it anyway.
Certainly consider and-
Well, you don't own the corner.
Center interest.
The, the corner is not part of your property, but-
True, and it'll, exactly. It all depends on where the property lines are relative, so.
Obviously, we can control whatever is within our property, so.
I realize that. I'm just thinking of protecting your, your property, your building.
Yeah, we are, you know, providing some screening, which is hopefully going to, you know, deter people from actually going that way. But, you know, safety is always a concern. So we would be able to put in a Jersey barrier or some sort of like, maybe small segmented retaining wall, something a little bit more aesthetic along the edge. That way, one, it gives you a barrier, and two-
Just, I have 50 years of experience in that neighborhood, so.
One of the plans is to increase the sidewalk width, which looks like you've done with your brick. The other plan is to put on, on-street bike paths on both sides of, of that street, up to the circle. If you go to the DOT project, that, that project is actually up on their side of, of projects that are moving ahead that are now fully funded and, I think they're still in the design stage, but they are moving ahead with that.
I have seen, yep, well, I've seen it listed on the state's project website list and map, but I haven't seen the actual design, because I don't know if it has been designed-
I haven't either, but that, we, we dealt with them three years ago, actually, right before COVID, I guess, when they were trying to put that together. Anybody else? Are you finished with your?
I am, yes. Thank you.
All right, I will conclude our presentation. I know we've given you a lot of information tonight. So to quickly conclude, I want to just briefly go through the special permit findings that are in your regulations and in the staff report. It's just a couple bullet points. First, the proposed use is in conformity with the requirements of the districts and the standards of the zoning regulations. With special permit approval, the project is zoning compliant with all zoning standards. The location, size, and intensity of this use is compatible and harmonious with the neighborhood in relation to the size of the property and the existing neighborhood development. As presented, this is a quiet, extremely secure use that significantly improves existing conditions on this site, positively impacting the surrounding area, and provides significant economic benefits to Stratford through new jobs, tax revenue. I believe under the state legislation, 3% of sales tax revenue comes direct to the local municipality. So that would be Stratford. The industry practice in Connecticut really indicates that the nature and intensity of this use is akin to a traditional retailer, and the site is zoned commercial and industrial. And it, the use is anticipated to be either the same or less intense than prior uses that have been on the site, particularly a restaurant, which can be a very intense use. My understanding is that it used to be Johnny's Restaurant. Here, the application is from a first-class applicant team that reflects significant site upgrades. It really brings a blighted building back to life. The next bullet is proposed uses in conformity with the town plan and development. As I mentioned, this proposes a new commercial use along Honey Spot Road in an area zoned for both commercial and light industrial, in an area that's a heavy mix of different coexisting uses. And then again, rehabilitation of a vacant dilapidated structure is encouraged by the town plan and development, and then encouraging new diverse economic base to town. The proposed use will not adversely affect safety in the streets, increase traffic congestion, or interfere with circulation, as just presented by Neil. As presented, there are no anticipated nuisance emissions of noise, light, smoke, odor, dust, vibrations that typically are a trigger for commercial industrial uses. And as presented, there's particularly with stormwater quality, there's a significant reduction in impervious surface. Odor mitigation measures to be put in place and proposed conditions for significant review to make sure that's the case. The next bullet is will not adversely affect the tax valuation of neighboring properties. The site in its current state, I'm sure, is hurting area property values. It is really not in good shape, and it's not been used economically for some time. Through the development of the site, bringing an active quality user to the site and these wonderful site updates, it really brings, will really have a beneficial impact on adjacent property owners. And the use will not create any fire or police hazards. This is, this is not a fire hazard. And as submitted, this is so heavily regulated. The security of the site is doubled that of a jewelry store, and they have to keep it per state regulation. And so, very, very secure. So, yeah, I submit that this is really a great location for this use from a really, really quality operator. Last, I received a copy of the staff report. There are a number of proposed conditions. I just had a couple of questions and comments on a few of them. I can either do it now, or if you want me to come back after public comment, all right. So, first one is-
Or I can just give her mine. Okay, sorry.
No, it's fine. It's fine. So a proposed condition number three is, this was already discussed, but this is the proposed condition that a copy of DCP approval is provided within six months of approval. We anticipate this will need longer than six months to obtain licensing from DCP due to the scope of work for this site. And so we request that it be extended to 12 months to provide that license, with permitted extensions from the commission as, as allowed. So number four-
Three, we're going to change from six months to 12 months. Sorry.
No, no, it's fine. The fourth suggested condition is the hours of operation. The zoning regulations state that the hours of operations cannot be, be, extend outside 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. The proposed condition is more restrictive than that. It proposes 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and 12 to 8 on Sundays. Encore, can you remind me, what were your desired hours of operation for this site? I apologize, I didn't write that down.
We typically do 10, 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM, seven days a week. So that is what we were hoping to get, if that's something that the commission would consider. And we, we don't look to open earlier than 10:00 AM typically.
Can I give you the background of how we arrived at that time? One of your, one of the previous use that stood here had about 250 people in the audience, and a lot of them were church people-
Okay.
With churches in the local area. And what they wanted was a buffer between when they got out of church on Sunday.
Sure.
So we actually put that in specifically caring for our community. So you're welcome to ask for it, but I will tell you that it was something that I thought was very critical, important for our local community, which they're not far from.
That's true, yeah.
So in terms of goodwill, I, I'll leave it at that.
Totally understood. No, that, I think we're fine with the not, you know, not wanting to interfere with any, any church activities. I think if there was an openness to 9:00 PM on, on the other end, then that's something we would request. But, but again, it's not absolutely necessary.
You mean during the week, weeknights?
Correct. Well, we would look for it even all seven days to be able to go to 9:00 PM, because I think the, the proposed condition is, is 8:00 PM all seven days. So I don't know, but if there's a concern that we would, you know, have an impact on Sundays late or something like that, then we, we can-
So what time are you talking about?
So I, I guess the request would then be 10, 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and noon to 9:00 PM on Sunday, I think would be what we would be seeking.
Noon. It was 12. It was, yeah, it was 12 to 8 on Sundays. So noon to what, 8?
Uh, just, yeah, I'm asking for, to go till 9 on all seven days instead of 8.
Okay. For the heathens in us who don't go to church, but it's- Noted.
Thank you.
Continue.
So to continue on, as six, condition number six pertains to ventilation and odor control plan for review. Subsection E specifically references growing and cultivation areas within the building.
And I, I have a note here that there is no, no growing in the building.
Okay.
Made that very clear.
Yes.
And I don't think Connecticut allows you to have growing in a retail establishment.
Totally separate licensing, everything.
But this is how quickly the law is changing.
Okay. So I just wondered, so that's already brought to your attention? So number eight is all recommendation made by the Architectural Review Board shall be strictly followed. The recommendations from the ARB, they're, they're not a problem for the team. The only one I wanted to flag for the Planning and Zoning Commission is they, number 10, consider reducing excess parking as allowable by the zoning regulations to create more green space on the site. We do provide more parking on the site than required under zoning, but we believe that having ample parking on-site is important. So ARB, they saw that, they said, "Well, can you reduce some spaces?" And we would like to keep the site with the ample parking. There's still some really, really nice green space all around the, the property buffer. So to the extent that there's a condition that requires us to comply with the ARB comments, I think, assuming the commission agrees, it'd be important to just clarify that the parking as proposed on the site plan is to be the level of parking provided.
My comment to you, and I'm, I'm not the ARB, but we are trying to do two things in Stratford. Increase our greenery, our, our cover, because that actually is right in a, in a heat spot.
Okay.
So we, we need as much green as we can in that area to, to cut down on some of the heats, of that heat spot. So that's one of my comments. But the other comment is, we have many projects where we know we don't have enough parking, where we're 30% short of parking that they still are going through. So take that under advisement also.
It's definitely competing interests, unfortunately. Here, we submit that the proposed layout, it's really thoughtfully designed. We have the circular layout, and there is already furthering your development goals of reducing impervious coverage and increasing green space on the site. So that is being fostered here, but.
Pollination gardens go a long way in this town. If that makes any sense?
I believe that was the last, the last comment I had on the proposed condition. Other than the additional ones to add about an additional ADA parking space and incorporating the requested fencing and wheel stops on the property.
Could I ask you a question about number five? There'll be no smoking, burning, consumption cannabis, but infused on the premise. And we don't say anything about exterior of the building specifically. But I understand that this probably is going to happen, but that you will create a, a real plan to implement that safety, that will, that you, that someone can see in Stratford and follow.
Oh, so something that's in writing, on, on file with P&amp;Z?
Yeah.
Oh, that shouldn't be a problem. Yeah, that's no problem. They already have it in place, and it's just providing a copy to Stratford, is my understanding, so.
You didn't go to 10.
I didn't have any other questions?
Well, you came back with one inch instead of half an inch, which we should all appreciate.
Oh, good catch.
Because that's, the future regulations are going to say one inch.
That's a good catch. I also believe condition number 11 has been, is not an issue.
Think greenery.
Yeah, the rest of these should be fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
So all the way down to 15, you're okay?
Yes.
With, except for the changes that we had talked about?
Correct.
That's it? Thank you.
I've talked enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, you guys did nice materials. I appreciate it.
I might be back to answer any questions.
We're not going to have, we're, I'm now going to open for public comments. Where am I here? Oh, is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of the petition? Which I think we had a couple people. In favor? Okay.
My name is Andrew Allen. My address is 490 Sherwood Place, apartment C-12. Andrew Allen, A-L-L-E-N. Yeah, I just want to speak in favor, just kind of from the consumer's perspective, speaking to two, excuse me, two things you guys mentioned. First, I have bought cannabis both in Connecticut and at other states, all over the country, in fact. The idea that people loiter in the parking lot and smoke it is non-existent. Never had the desire to do that myself. It's not something that other people want to do. You also just noticed that, like, with these establishments, police are kind of vigilant. A lot more vigilant than I would say with a lot of liquor stores in the country. You know, a lot of people hanging out outside of them. I've never seen the same problem or done it myself with a cannabis establishment. And then just in terms of the smell, even in some of the stores he mentioned, like where you can go and view the product, outside of the building is not, there's, there's never been a problem. And I've been to places that are in, you know, like normal plazas, like any other store might be. So I just don't think those are two things you guys should have to worry about in terms of the community and things like that.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak in favor? Second time anybody liked to speak in favor? Hearing no one, I now will say, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Please give your name and address.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Ralph Lowe.
My name is Ralph Lowe. I'm an attorney from 3638 Main Street in Stratford. And I represent the adjoining property owner, Stratford Town Fair Associates LLP. They own property at 114 Honey Spot Road and 1785 Stratford Avenue, both of which touch the applicant, the applicant's proposed purchased property. I also represent Town Fair Tire Centers, Inc., which leases 114 Honey Spot Road. And both of those entities have been here in Stratford in existence at those locations as owner and tenant for approximately 60 years. I'm not really here in opposition, but I have comments and concerns and some, uh, recommendations I would like the board to adopt. One of the concerns we have relates to the layout of the premises. And as I'm sure the board members, members know, the access and egress area to Town Fair Tire's two bays along the side of the building are right next to the driveway that serves the, uh, cannabis property, or will serve the cannabis property. And when we learned about this application, we were and still are very concerned about the fact that customers of the cannabis store will park on the Town Fair Tire property either because there's inadequate parking in the rear. And I know there are 25 spaces, but 10 spaces are devoted to, uh, employee parking, and there'll be shift changes, and there'll be deliveries. So, I don't know that it's adequate. We don't know that it's adequate. And people may park at the Town Fair Tire premises nevertheless. So, because of that concern, we reached out to Attorney Miles, who just made this presentation. And through a series of emails and telephone conversations, we agreed that the applicant would construct a fence. Attorney Miles has referenced the fence in her presentation.
And Jay, you have let in.
And we agreed upon the size of the fence, the location of the fence, the height of the fence, the type of the fence. And I'm requesting, as she did, that you make that a condition of approval should you deem to approve this application. The fence would begin five feet back from Honey Spot Road, and it would incidentally be a black chain link fence. And it would go back for 20 feet for, at a height of four feet. And then it would change to six feet, and it would continue until it reaches the corner of the Town Fair building that's closest to Honey Spot Road. And then it would jut out perpendicularly to the right, uh, over the Stratford Town Fair Associates property, uh, to meet the Town Fair Tire building. Now, we feel that that will cure a safety hazard that would occur without the fence because folks will park in the Town Fair lot. They will walk across the queuing area or access easement area of Town Fair Tire, where cars are going in and out every day, six days a week. And sooner or later, someone would get hurt. So, if we can prevent access from the Town Fair parking lot, that would be terrific. Uh, one of our other concerns was with regard to, uh, the tire stops in the rear. It's very tight, the parking and the distance between the parking and our building in the rear. So, uh, through discussions with Attorney Miles, the applicant has agreed to install tire stops so that the front or rear of the cars parked there will not be over the Town Fair Tire property or even worse, hit the Town Fair Tire building. So, uh, that's, that's really it. I would request that you incorporate as conditions the fence and the tire stops. Thank you, and I'll answer any questions.
Would you be opposed to having the applicant supply signage on your property of, "This is for Town Fair Tire parking only. All others will be towed at your expense." I, I was in the business for 35 years. It does work. You put a sign out there, people will not park.
I, I, I think, because we've had a parking problem with the facility in, in the rear as you proceed past the Town Fair Tire building, that those signs might already be there. But I don't see a problem if they're not there.
Yeah, but I, I see them being very good neighbors, and I see them working with you. And if that's what you would like and make this thing move a little bit smoother for you, I, I think they would be more than happy to put up a couple of signs that's, you know, encourage not to park there.
Yeah.
So, if, if we pass this tonight, it's okay to include that into a stipulation?
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody who would like to speak in opposition? Hearing none?
Motion to close.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're now gonna open our meeting for, we're gonna continue this if you're here. We're now going to open our regular meeting. Our administrative section, sorry. I need someone to, motion to open?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Motion to open the administrative session?
We closed the, we didn't, but we have to open the administrative? All right. We did. Oh, I closed the, okay. A motion to close the, uh, public hearing.
We already did that.
I thought that's what we did.
We did. I made the motion. Linda seconded.
Yeah, that's, we have to close that one. Then we have to close the public hearing. She's right. We're human. All right, so then, we're moving on with our...
Linda did the second. I think Linda did the second. She seconded the second. I did.
So, the first thing we're gonna do then, we now have officially opened our administrative.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion to take item one off the table.
Which is 130 Honey Spot Road?
Yes.
Retail cannabis establishment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion to approve. All we need is an approval, right, Jay?
No, we need an approval with conditions.
And add the condition.
So, we need to, we need to discuss the condition.
But that's what they need to go to the state.
So, Commissioner Fredette, correct?
Well, that'll be all part of...
Please look at Jay's, look at Jay's staff report.
And I'm happy to run through...
Staff review.
The conditions that we heard, I'm happy to run through again the conditions that we heard this evening that were not included in my recommended conditions of approval. And then I can go over, in addition to those new ones, the modifications that I kind of heard.
You took, you took notes of them.
I have notes for everything. So, you all can make your motions, and then I can run through them, and then you can say what he said.
Oh, I was just trying to get the ball rolling.
So, then, let's ask Jay to, before we do a discussion, can we ask Jay to go through?
We gotta get a second?
Second, or now we discuss?
All right. Well, all those in...
All in favor?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Five zero.
Now discussion.
Now discussion. What I'd like to do is to have Jay go through his staff report. I took notes about where changes were, whether we approve it or disapprove it. I'd like him to go through that so we have a basis to have a conversation afterwards. All right? So, Jay, do you wanna?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the first item that we heard was to add a second ADA parking space in the parking lot.
That's new.
We heard to preserve the mural, um, and to make that conditional upon the approval of the Planning and Zoning Administrator or the Arts Commission, however you all feel that that's best to be approved. We just have to ma, and we will be, my staff will make sure, this is outside of the condition. My staff will make sure that it is not a sign and that it is truly a mural. So, we'll take care of that. The applicant has proposed, um, or has agreed to a fence being installed. So, a fence shall be installed in between the budding property to the north, completely enclosing the site, preventing pedestrians from cutting through abutting properties to access 130 Honey Spot Road. I would prefer to see a, a full wrought iron fence as opposed to a, uh, black-coated chain link fence. I just think it's, it's a far nicer fence and not that much more expensive. It essentially replicates a wrought iron fence, but it's aluminum. So, my recommendation is that you choose a higher quality material other than black-coated vinyl, vinyl fence.
Excuse me, Jay?
Yes.
You're speaking of the type of fence that just has these steel pickets?
Vert, they're vertical.
Right.
Vertical, vertical picket fence that you can see through. And they're made of aluminum today. It doesn't have to be wrought iron, but they're made to replicate wrought iron. Uh, I think they look far nicer than, than the chain, than the chain link fence. But, you know, that's a personal preference, so if you all prefer chain link.
Well, I think particularly with the lighting, it would help make it feel less prison-like.
Agreed.
Visually.
Wheel stops shall be installed in all parking spaces abutting, uh, the Town Fair Tire site. I'll just include the address and won't reference Town Fair Tire. And then I will be, I am moving on now to my conditions, my suggested conditions of approval. Uh, first one being item number three. Uh, my third suggested condition of approval, the applicant has requested, typically we allow for six, you need, they need to, uh, secure their permit from DCP within six months. Uh, the applicant felt that given the extensive renovation, restoration of the site, that a more likely, um, a more likely timeline for them is 12 months. So, we may wanna change in my recommendation number three from six months to 12 months to prevent them having to come back before completely separate commission. So, my recommendation is to change that from six months to 12 months if the commission is amenable. Uh, condition number four, regarding the hours of operation. Uh, the applicant has, uh, the applicant has requested that they, their hours of operation be 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. I'm sorry, 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday, and then Sunday noon through 9:00 p.m. The suggested con, hours of operation based on the previous retail cannabis establishment was 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday and 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Sundays. Now, it, it sounds like the applicant is certainly willing to, to respect the 10:00 a.m. start time and the noon start time on Sunday, which was observing the requests from the religious institutions in the neighborhood, but requested that their, uh, closing hours, instead of being 8:00 p.m., being 9:00 p.m. I personally have no problem with that, but I will leave that to you. So, um, you know, you, I think you can just, if you were to include this as a stipulation, you could say as stipu, stipulated, as proposed, um, 8:00 a.m., I'm sorry, 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday, noon to 9:00 p.m. on Sunday. Or as originally proposed in my staff comment. That's your, your call. In condition number six, where we're talking about a review of the ventilation and odor control plan, uh, there is a typo in item number E. Item number E can be eliminated 'cause this is not a cultivation and grow facility. Lastly, we have item number eight that, and recommended change is that all recommendations made by the Architectural Review Board shall be strictly followed except for item recommendation number 10. Except for recommendation number 10, which, uh, considers the reduction of excess parking in addition to the max, the minimum required.
And Jay, that we had also, we discussed a little bit here, the detailing on the top of the, of the porch. We didn't really come up with any suggestion for them, but that was the only other thing that the, that the ARB had, had discussed.
So, what we can do is, and we've done this, I think we did this last month, because some of these recommendations, they're challenging to interpret for staff when we're issuing a building permit. Uh, the applicant, so, item number eight can read, "All recommendations by ARB shall be strictly followed except item number 10," period. "The applicant shall also provide written confirmation from the Chairman of the Architectural Review Board that the intent of their recommendations, all, the intent of all other recommendations have been satisfied."
And both of those actually say, "Consider." They don't say, "Do."
Correct.
So, that they do qualify.
So, and that allows, and I know the Architectural Review Board is, was thrilled to hear that rec, uh, condition of approval last month. Um, so that, you know, maybe not every single condition is of their, recommendation of theirs is included, but they feel the intent of their recommendations have been satisfied. And so, I think that's a good compromise, that it makes it easier for staff to approve a building permit for something.
Jay, may I ask you a question about this? Because what they're saying here is, um, parking as allowable by zoning regulations. They're coming in on the number for retail capacity in what they've suggested is the number of parking spaces.
Well, they're providing, I think, 14 or 15 spaces, I don't recall, are, are the minimum requirement, and I believe they're providing 24 or 25.
So, that gives them 10 for employees and 15 for whatever, for retail.
Correct. And if you look at their, you know, their traffic report, which indicated 24 to 27 estimated trips during peak hours, you know, you figure, okay, well, if no one orders online and you've got 27 trips coming in within the hour, those spaces are probably going to be needed peak. You know, I, I don't think it's anticipated that that's the case, given that 50% of their projected sales are to be online where it's a, you know, five-minute, 10-minute at most transaction. Park, walk in, pick up your order that's already been placed, pay, and you're out. So, I think that the parking that's being provided, I, I do feel it's appropriate. Uh, you know, the commission could add a, a, a line that says any parking, any additional parking, any parking in addition to the minimum requirement shall be impervious. However, I think that, I'm not sure that that's necessary given the fact that they are handling more stormwater than even our town engineer has requested.
Yes.
I, I, I think I would just leave it as is, leave it as, um, "Architectural Review Board recommendations be strictly followed except item recommendation number 10," period. "The applicant pri, prior to receiving a building permit, the applicant shall receive written confirmation from the Architectural Review Board Chair that the intent of their recommendations have been satisfied." And that's all I have.
Um, I just think that in, on number five, I think that should be premises as opposed to premise. So, that's just a, just a spelling. It should be with an S, yes. It does, yeah. Premises is the, is the building and the surround, which is, I know it was one of your concerns, but it should be an S. Yeah, it's not a premise, it's a premises.
Thank God.
And, and the only two other things I had was that, did you increase the half an inch to an inch? I know, but you included that in your changes or, no? I just wanna make sure what they decided.
And I can add the word "a minimum of a half an inch" while the applicant has provided a full inch. And I can add the word a minimum of a half an inch while the applicant has provided a full inch.
Okay, okay.
Are we including the additional ADA's parking space or are we leaving it as is?
It's included. I just would like a clarification on the fence. We spoke of a chain link for 10 feet possibly. The attorney lawyer wanted the six, up to 20, 25 feet and then 16 or six feet after that. We did not include that in there. We just said fence. So, if we want to...
So, my suggestion was that complies with the, with the zoning regulations for, for fences. And so, if we wanted to specifically state that that is how it had, had to be, then we could certainly add in that the fence, first 25 feet shall be four feet tall.
Well, there's a right-of-way, so we don't know what that right-of-way is. It's not, it doesn't appear on.
Just needs to be on their property.
So, from the edge of the right-of-way, back.
Okay, so as long as they meet our zoning regulations, maybe they can work it out amongst themselves on the remaining height?
I'm hesitant to, to require, to stipulate a condition that says they need to put something on someone else's property. I don't think that that's a very good idea, similar to the signs. If the neighboring, abutting property owner has issues with, you know, folks parking there that shouldn't, they should put up their own signs and they should tell people at their own risk. I'm not sure I, I, I to require someone to put something on someone else's property. You know, properties can change hands. I think that might be something that might be best, it sounds like there's agreement with that either way, that, that if that becomes an issue, if the, if the applicant doesn't want to do it, the abutting property only owner certainly could as well.
I think they'll work it out.
I'll say work it out. Yes, ma'am, Debbie.
My suggestion was, you know, a faux wrought iron fence that provides the same line of sight, but is more attractive than a chain link fence, a vinyl coated chain link.
This could be an anchor for that, redeveloping that whole commercial strip if it looks nice. It's really going to make a difference.
I agree and I understand that, but I see somebody getting stabbed with the top of that fence.
What, from jumping over the fence instead of walking around?
Kids will be kids. Yeah, but you survived.
Showing the scars.
You didn't have those picket fence.
So, what we're going to do next, if there's any, anybody else want to make a comment? Anybody have any questions, need clarification? What I'd like to do is just to go down and ask Jay to just mention the new items and the revisions. And if we all agree with that, then we can vote to accept this supplemental. If we agree with the supplemental, then we can vote on the whole project. Does that make sense? So, this will be efficient way to move through this. Jay, can you just speak about the new items? Do you want to read them?
I have, I have.
That's great, yeah.
So, so the one thing I think I still need clarity on is the hours of operation. And I think you all should discuss whether or not you want what the applicant has proposed, 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday and noon to 9:00 p.m. Or we keep the, the closing hour at 8:00 p.m.
I would like to see that we, seeing he's working on, working with us on the Sunday hours. We make the Sunday hours 12 to 9:00 and the rest of the week 10 to 9:00.
That's what we have now.
Right.
Oh, well, that's what we've written down.
Right. I, I think that's more than fair.
Noon to 9:00 and Monday through Saturday, 10:00. No, no. What we have currently, no, no, he's right. Currently, we have 10 to 8:00.
So, I presented these two options for you to, to vote, essentially to say, we want these, these hours and not these. I didn't know which one you wanted, so you may have to take a vote to determine which one you want.
But he's willing to work with us till 12:00.
So, I'm gonna, it's really, look, I'm gonna ask us to look back on previous-like projects when the audience has been very clear of their need. In that sense, I'm hoping to address their need. Someone who came here that day with heartfelt feelings. I hope that in this, we can address them in some way to give them the respect they deserve. So, that's my only reason for even bringing this up as an issue. Commercial area. Okay. Okay. Hey, hey, it's your district. So, you have a right to speak for them. So, tell us, tell me the times. You are? They wanted 10 to 9:00. Okay. And is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Monday through Saturday. Yes, okay.
To 9:00.
Go to church day. Absolutely.
To 9 o'clock. I think that's what I said. Okay.
And then I think the, the sec, so now that we have that cleared up, we have one more kind of cosmetic issue, which is the fence. So, you all have to figure out, do you just want to do the vinyl, the vinyl chain link or the, the option that I suggested?
I definitely like the characteristics better of the wrought iron type fencing, aluminum fencing compared to the chain link fencing. I mean, the aesthetics is totally different. I mean, I mean, just from as a builder, I mean, that's a big difference in, in the character of, of the, of the building they're trying to make nicer.
It's not going to make or break them.
With no pointy, sharp tips.
Sorry. It will change visually that neighborhood, that corner.
Correct.
That little bit of nicer fence will make that area look like it's going somewhere.
And it's not that much more expensive, to be honest.
So, anybody, everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Simply doing the chain link with, with that, the other fence?
Swapping out the chain link for the, right.
Following the parameters that were put in by our lawyer for...
And mentioned by Jay, actually.
And...
Jay mentioned the parameters.
Yeah, we'll blame it on Jay.
Four feet to six feet to all of that. And that's going to have to be a conversation between you guys if, if this goes through, because I don't know how this is going to ever appear on a piece of paper, about where the jigs and where it goes 40 to 60.
He just wants it back and connect it to the...
Corner of the building.
Right. But we can't, can we, that's once again going on somebody's property.
No, my assumption is, what you described was it was going to be on the, on the cannabis property until it got to that little short jig that connected up to the side of the, of the existing building.
Jay, how did you present that? Even if the building, even if the building is right on the line, the way that I, I worded it is that, so that 130 Honey Spot Road is completely enclosed. So, if they decide that they're able to work out a deal with their neighbor and completely enclose their property by abutting it up against their, their structure, then they can work that out amongst themselves. We are just going to tell them, you completely enclose the property to, to, I think, resolve the issue of folks parking and trying to cut through. You all have resolved that issue.
Okay.
And where the mechanics of it actually go, does it butt up against the back of their concrete wall, or I'm sorry, of the building, or just terminate on their own property? They're able to do that and satisfy what I hear is the concern, so.
Okay. Is that it?
No, the wheel stops are the last one.
Oh, you missed the wheel stops. That was a new one. And you, you have this cut, you cut this out, right?
Right.
And let's see.
So, I'm happy to read through these one more time so that with all the edits, unless you all feel that you can, unless you all feel comfortable with where they are, just based on the conversation, I'll take your direction.
Is anybody confused? Anybody want Jay to read through the, one more time, the whole thing? I think we're okay.
I think we're better than usual.
I think Jay did, Jay did a splendid job.
So, I guess we could move to, we could vote on these.
Mr. Chairman, well, could I motion to approve with the stipulations that we just discussed?
Certainly may.
With the inclusion of all the ARB considerations except 10.
And staff, and staff, and...
And Jay Basky and the plantings.
And the pieces we came up tonight.
Correct.
Is that good enough? Anybody second that?
I think we...
Deborah seconds it?
Didn't we already make that motion to include the stipulations?
No, we started with stipulations, but then he made a motion that included all of it.
Yeah, but I started it by making a motion to approve. And then we seconded it. And we approved it. Then we went into discussion.
No, we didn't. We never voted on the approval. That's when I stopped us and said, let us go through the stipulations first.
I made the motion, we seconded it, then we went to discussion.
But we never voted on it.
No, all we have to do now is just vote on it.
I think if, if Lenny were here, he would tell you to amend the motion to include the conditions.
Exactly. That's what I want to make sure. So, we need to restate, so withdraw your motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to withdraw my motion.
Okay, now you're going to make a new motion that includes the...
Just, just ask him to amend his motion to include the conditions as we've just discussed.
Which is what I, which is what I did 20 minutes ago, but okay.
Well, with your motion to approve, you would just add my, my amendments to my, to your motion that I mentioned.
Yes.
The conditions.
Motion to approve 130 Honey Spot Road retail cannabis establishment with the stipulations that, and condition, well, stipulations that Jay wrote in, read into the record and conditions that Deion has added. The amendments.
And then you're going to second that again.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0. Do a good job.
Well, we included all the stipulations.
I gotta find my... Here, here, I gotta here somewhere, here.
Yeah, I know.
Is there anybody here from there? No. Okay. Approval of minutes. Guys, we're sorry, we still have a half hour at least to go. Thank you very much. Okay, next on the item, next on the item, I need someone, Deborah.
Motion to take off the administrative item? I'm going to, motion to go to administrative.
Motion to...
Accept the minutes.
That's Deborah's job.
I hear you.
Shh. Hey. Second by Harold. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to go down now. No administrative site plans, coastal site plan review. I hope that everybody read this. There was a document that Jay gave you today, which is the latest update from the DOT, the DOT, the DEP, which basically is giving approval on this project. So, even though some of it is a private project, it is really being managed by the state. So, there's not a whole lot here that we have to comment on, because normally we are waiting for the, the state to give us their comments to base our decisions. They've already given us their comments and they're actively involved in this project in terms of all the permitting. They won't let the people do it without the permits they need. The only question I had was for Jay, does this have anything to do with the new floodgates that are coming in at that same area?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
And I can just give you a two-minute overview of what the project is so that you all have an understanding as to what you're voting on, because we did get some of this information last second. So, this is essentially, the project proposes to remove derelict bulkhead on the shoreline to install new bulkhead with, with 620 feet of linear sheet pile, as well as to install a, some native tidal vegetation to reduce erosion and essentially satisfying DEEP's requirements for a living shoreline. So, they are providing a combination of armored shore and living shoreline to reduce erosion and preserve the site. The majority, the vast majority of this work, almost 99%, is being done within the coastal jurisdiction, which is DEEP's jurisdiction. And because they are essentially driving some sheet piles into the dirt, that's why we're here talking about it. Everything else is essentially within their jurisdiction. So, lastly, as part of this project, they are removing some derelict piles that had been driven out into the mud flats. Those are being removed to reduce any hazards within the water, in the waterway. You can tell I'm not a boater.
May I interject a comment on that? If you study their drawings, you will see pilings down in the water, six feet below water, which tells you how much the water level has actually raised in 100 years. It's right there on paper.
More like the pilings broke off.
Well, the, the what?
Pilings broke off.
No, it, it looks like, if you look at them... Okay, go ahead, Jay, sorry.
So, I have two conditions of approval that I'm recommending. One is in my staff comments, that prior to the commencement of any site work, the Stratfor Health Department shall be notified, giving, given the contamination of the surrounding area and all best management protocols regarding remediation activities be followed. And then two, this was a recommendation, recommendation in DEEP's letter today, that the commission, the applicant is required to install and maintain sedimentation and erosion controls during the construction for all work on the upland. That's all, the only comments I have.
Jay, I have one other question. In this document, there is, when you look at the site plans, there's all this information about the living shore plantings and the site, the plans say done by other. They don't take ownership of the responsibility for those site, for the living, all the plantings that take place there. Does that make sense?
Well, I think what you're saying is you're not, you're curious as to who's responsible for doing it. The project doesn't get signed off by our department until it's done. And honestly, our staff, we don't care who does it. It, DEEP may say, we've got to recommend a preferred vendor. The applicant may end up doing it, so...
Does that, that build back to the applicant?
It still, it still falls on the shoulders of the applicant to satisfy the plan that was designed.
And without the living shore, they are not, they're never going to get a COO on that work.
That is correct.
Okay. That's my question. Anybody? We need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve with the conditions that Jay had provided in his response and also as all requirements provided that is needed by DEEP.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
5-0.
I have to add one more statement.
I have to add one more statement for the record petitions that were heard this evening were advertised in the Connecticut Post on September thirteenth and September twentieth. I forgot, I forgot it.
This one's yours or mine?
What else do we have here? I don't think we have anything else. We have what? Sorry. Oh, 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 ADUs, sorry. Guys, we have, we keep putting this off. What do we? Will you give a summary, Jay?
So I would say about three months ago, the zoning, this commission had requested that I put together a revised accessory dwelling unit regulation. It was quite, it's quite ambitious and we kinda did the all encompassing, we took a big swing at what we wanted, what, we took a big swing for our first look at this. So you all instructed me to bring this to the Stratford Housing Partnership who produced our housing plan. We discussed this for three months at the Housing Partnership. And they were, they provided us this letter, which you all should have, it should be the last letter in your packet. If you don't have it, it's okay. And it's essentially, the partnership has thanked you for, for including them in the decision-making process. They provided several recommendations and I just wanna quickly read it, it's very, very brief. The Stratford Housing Partnership would like to recommend the zoning commission consider changes to the accessory apartment and accessory dwelling unit regulations as part of the overall review of the zoning regulations. While the Housing Partnership understands the zoning commission may continue to refine this regulation as information becomes, continues to become available, the partnership believes that ADUs will help address the housing needs of a variety of, of current and future residents important to our community. In general, the Housing Partnership, the Housing Partnership recommends owner occupancy of the principal structure, which we included, that was, we included owner occupancy, on the lot and the allowance of ADU that the, that is attached to the principal structure of the property, which we provided an option to do detached, which can be adapted to the owner's changing needs over the course of their lives. Some areas to consider while developing the ADU regulation are whether it is necessary to require an A2 survey since this could add an expense creating an ADU. And lastly, whether it makes sense to notify neighbors if the approval is administrative and there is no opportunity for public input, which is a good recommendation. On behalf of the partnership, we would like to thank you for your consideration in this matter. Please let me know, please let me know if the commission has any other questions. Chairman Jennifer Sheldon. So I think that, and just in sum, what we sent to the partnership was an ADU regulation that required the principal owner who owns the property has to live on site. So we satisfied that. And item number two was that we only allow ADUs when they are attached to the principal structure. Can't do it in a detached garage off in the back, can't do it in a detached little ten by ten freestanding structure. Has to be attached. That was their recommendation. You all may choose that, you, you may determine that you disagree with that and they, in order to be flexible, they need to be detached. But that's really for you, your all's discussion. And, you know, I think right now, after you all discuss either tonight or have time to think about it and we discuss it next month, you need to give me the direction of Jay. Incorporate these recommendations, put together a formal application to amend the zoning regulations. And let's get, let's get it on the books now. Or as we work with SLR over the next six months, we determine, we instruct Robert at our next meeting. We got this letter from the Housing Partnership, we would like to see the draft regulation included in the zoning regulation update. So. That's all, that's what I have.
I actually don't mind their, their, their pinpointing recommendations. I don't know, we were trying to be flexible with having it being detached. And that's the only, that's the only one I have maybe that I wanna just think about.
May I speak as a member of this committee and also that committee? I did not vote on this. I was asked to accuse myself, but that was a major point of discussion amongst all the members of that, of the, of the partnership. And it wasn't till the very end when we essentially made a late discovery that if you build in, 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 in an attached dwelling, you gotta do sewer and water connections. Are you gonna require they be with the primary dwelling? Or are you gonna require they be new? And that creates a real, something that Jay's office is gonna have to figure out long-term, because that's a whole different matter, particularly when you look at a property then, you have two different houses on the same piece of property. Would you then divide that? You know what I mean? It really creates sticky situations that, in fairness to the committee, we didn't, this did not pop up until one of our last meetings. So it kind of shadowed the, the committee itself. But there's, I'm not speaking out of school, but almost everybody on that committee recognizes that Stratford needs more affordable housing. So all of them agreed that we've got to do something. And this is something that's within the bounds, that we can take little bites of and maybe get ten or twenty additional units if we can get them so that they're viewed as affordable. Yes, Deborah? Except, actually. That's, yes, and the, the, the partnership agreed with that. They, they took out the definition of family. A family is who you think family is, not what your birthright is. We took out, the owner can live in either the ADU or in the, in the primary home. That the owner still has to have fifty-one percent of the mortgage, of the, the fifty-one percent of the ownership of the, of the, the structure, whether it's the ADU or the whatever, they still have to be the primary. The taxes still have to come to them. They still have to do reporting every three years as if they are, I still have an ADU. Because if current laws says, if you're not gonna use it as an ADU, then you gotta take out the kitchen. So the only thing that the, where the partnership had real problems was the issue of a standalone dwelling. They were worried that it would quickly escalate and cause essentially two-family homes on lots in one-family zoning districts. So there needs to be a way that that can be clarified for them, that they can feel comfortable with that, that no, this still is attached to the primary dwelling if we say they can't have a separate sewer or water hookup. It's gotta be the. Right. And that's where I think honestly, if we went back to them with clarity on that.
Jay knows, I just, yeah, and so, you know, I probably spent several hours with staff over the past few months really talking about, okay, so there's concern about the existing twenty by twenty-four garage being converted into apartment that's seventy-five feet away from the house. Now, there are certainly, I mean, people have come up with ways to get around this regulation today, where we had someone who, we told them, oh, it has to be a family member and it has to be attached, but there, our regulation does not spell it out. So they have a thirty-five-foot breezeway going across their backyard attaching to the garage. Now that's not the intent of our regulation for an attached. So what Dan and I had spoken about was maybe it has to be attached by foundation wall, which we thought that's too expensive 'cause it may not require a foundation. Maybe we say, an, an ADU must be attached to the principal structure and no further than ten feet away. You know, a ten-foot breezeway, and that's quite typical from what you see from a garage breezeway to the house. That would look relatively normal while being attached, 'cause I can just tell you from my perspective, you know, when, when I hear folks who, they want to have family members or someone move in, but the family member doesn't want to live in the same house. They, they want that ten foot of separation, whether it's because mother-in-law doesn't wanna feel a burden or because the senior citizen who's now renting out to someone that's not family doesn't feel safe. They want that little bit of separation and not a shared wall. And I, I hear that. So I think that there might be a way that we can require them to be attached and no further than ten feet away, wall to wall, separated by a breezeway or connected by a breezeway.
But Jay, is it worth considering what I, what I run up about the sewer water connections?
Yeah, and so in all honesty, that's, that is really a determination that's made by the building department by building code. If it meets a certain requirement, then they have to have a new sewer connection. And, you know, whether or not it's a new sewer connection, it doesn't change whether or not, I mean, we're allowing this, it's a single-family house with an ADU. Is it, is it, is it a single-family with an ADU or is it a two-family? It doesn't really matter as long as you're behind the premise of making the housing more affordable, at least in my opinion. So just regarding the separate sewer, that's left, from my opinion, that's left to be determined by the, the engineering department and the building department per building code. And I wouldn't get lost in that, in that.
Their, their second point about the A2, or their first point, their third point, their fourth point about the A2 survey. The Housing Partnership is looking at ADUs as a means of affordable housing. The goal eventually is to find a way, and the state, our state government's working on this, they've worked on it for three years and every time that it doesn't get passed. They're hopeful this year again that it will, that there's a new way of recognizing what is affordable. That these units essentially could become recognized as an affordable with a deed restriction on them. So that essentially Stratford would be able to use that as one of the seven hundred and fifty units that we need to add to our list so that we are not constantly under eight-thirty G apartment regulations. But that's still down the road. But remember that what we're trying to do is to set this up in a way that it can shift towards that so that theoretically we have a reason for them to say, you need to record this on your deed. And start that in motion.
And I personally have no feeling as to whether or not we require an A2 survey or not. You know, the A2 survey allows staff to look at it and say, everything meets all the zoning requirements. That's great. Also costs twenty-five hundred dollars. So, you know, we can as staff review these, these site plans and get pretty darn close without requiring an A2 survey, whether or not it needs variance or not. So whether that is a requirement going forward, it, it doesn't really matter. I think that, you know, you all are used to adopting new legislation for the town. And the Housing Partnership did an admirable job making some of these recommended changes when it's, it's not really something they're used to doing. So I think we take, you know, we, we consider it and then my recommendation is to sit on it for, until our next meeting. And then if you have more feedback over the next month, you could send it to me and I'll bring it back in another report and maybe have a decision then.
And look at what Fairfield's doing, look at what Westport's doing, 'cause they do, they are putting projects in motion about some of their ADU stuff.
Fairfield definitely is.
Yeah, there, there are other, there are other ordinances out there already that are, that are, it's worth it to look. I mean, they have different finances than we do, but it's still worthwhile looking at that information.
And I didn't know that, I thought it was like fifteen hundred, twenty-five hundred, I might not agree to that bullet point now.
Yes? No, they, it's already, it's in their hands. It's been, it's been sent, correct?
No, well, I mean, you were discussing it, you can give direction to, to, for Robert to add this to his list, to incorporate and we can revisit the details when that point comes. I'm happy to do that.
Do we need to vote on that?
Well, he's gotta make a motion.
A motion? All in favor? He understands that. And he's been writing some of these ADU all across the state, so he has a pretty good background in some of this. So I think we're done? Oh, we have to vote, yes. I thought we did. Okay, vote. All in favor? Aye, five zero. We're good at voting. Deborah, I wanna do that. I wanna do that 'cause I want her to put my name in there. Motion to adjourn? Second? Aye.